Okay, for those that are joining in, we did have a few technical difficulties this morning. And where we have left off is the county resident comments and concerns portion. We have approved the public hearing, the agenda and established a quorum. So moving right along commissioners, this is the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda this time. If there's any members in the public that wishes to address a governing body on any issue whatsoever, now is the appropriate time. Morning.
Good morning commissioners. My name is Lindy Lynn. I'm with Senator Lummis's office and I'm just here today to see what you have going on in Sweetwater County and, and see if you had any questions or information you wanted me to take back to the Senator.
Well, thanks for being here Lindy. We appreciate showing a little attention to little old Sweetwater. I assume you too didn't bring a big bag of cash with you, so.
Sorry, no.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Lynn commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tom.
I just would like to thank you personally for attending our coalition local government meetings. Via phone, which is very difficult, but we appreciate very much that you're staying plugged into all the federal actions that we take.
What's new back east that you can update us on?
So I don't specifically work on legislation. I can, um, what's, there's a lot going on. The Senator just sponsored a bill regarding farmland, foreign ownership of farmland. She's watching the BLM issue very closely. Let's see, I'm trying to think of what else would pertain specifically to Sweetwater County. But yeah, if you're not signed up for her newsletters, I can sure get you signed up for those which have a wealth of information.
Okay, great. Any other comments, questions commissioners? Well, thanks for coming over.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Still under the county resident comments and concerns portion, if there's anyone else that would like to address governing body, now would be the time.
Do we have students in attendance? Boy Scouts?
You want to introduce yourself?
He's on agenda.
Oh, you're on the agenda.
Okay.
Sit tight, we'll be right there. Seeing and hearing no other comments or concerns, we will go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. And move right along to tab B. Under tab B is the consent agenda today commissioners. We do have four items, first being the approval of the July 18th, 2023 minutes. Two is the approval of the county vouchers, warrants and EALs. Three is the approval of the bonds. And four is a request to restaff a vacant position in the sheriff's office for the court security deputy. Having reviewed that, if you don't have any questions or changes commissioners, what's your pleasure?
It's Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Move to approve the items on the consent agenda.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Tillman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. Next up on the agenda is commissioner comments and it looks like Commissioner Richards is up first.
Morning Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. After our last meeting on the 18th, I joined Chairman West and Public Works Director Gene Legursky for a tour of the Carnegie Building. Next door as well as an in-depth tour of this courthouse. Regarding the Carnegie building, I think it's probably about time that we make some difficult decisions about its future. And to be honest, I think that decision probably needs to be to tear it down. I know that won't be popular if that's the direction we go, but, but that, that building is a safety hazard. It's, it's time. That would create some opportunity for upgrades to this building, including expansion for another district courtroom. And I look forward to working with all of you as well as Gene to make good plans going forward to accomplish that. On the 20th, I attended a community growth meeting where we discussed how the local communities can best be ready for the impacts we'll be facing over the next two to five years and beyond. I felt like everyone thought that the county should take the lead role in getting ready for it, but I felt that it should be more of a partnership between the county and the two major cities. I recommended that our land use director get together with his counterparts from Rock Springs, Green River to form a micro committee that can organize a housing needs study. The initial plan was to pursue a WBC grant to pay for that, but it looks like that process is just too slow to be useful for our needs. Eric feels that we could have, we could have one done for about $40,000 and split, split three ways. That could be reasonable and affordable for all of us. We don't have to commit to anything right now, but I wanted all of you to be aware of it because they'll probably bring it up soon for, for a formal proposal. In the meantime, the state has put together an online survey of local industries where they can provide estimates of their short and long-term workforce demands. And we can compile that into a timeline that can be incorporated into the housing needs study. Few issues that we've identified is not just a lack of affordable housing in the area, which is a huge problem on its own, but a lack of available housing in general. A housing study will at least give us and developers an idea of what the coming demand is and give us a chance to meet it. On the 22nd, I attended the Sweetwater County Republican Party's county commissioner selection meeting. They asked me to provide a welcome speech to the group where I challenged them to nominate three people who were both highly qualified and who would be ready to step up and get to work immediately if they were selected. I think they did exactly that. And I think you would all agree that the Sweetwater GOP took their responsibilities seriously and engaged in a thorough and thoughtful selection process. I want to thank them for sending us three great nominees. I've met with all three of them individually, and I think you would also agree that because the party took their job seriously, it has made ours even more difficult. Because choosing between them later today will not be easy. I want to thank all eight candidates that applied to fill the vacant seat. It is never easy to put yourself out there for public scrutiny and I commend each and every one of them for participating and giving the selection committee great options to choose from. I hope that each of you stays involved and continues to provide Sweetwater County with the benefit of your public service. Aside from a lot of email and a few constituent contacts, contacts, that's pretty much what I've accomplished over the last couple of weeks. I missed both the library board and the fair board meeting because of some personal commitments last week, but I stay in contact with their directors in case anything comes up. And speaking of the fair board, if you didn't already know, Sweetwater County Fair is going on this week. Candy and her team have been working diligently to put on what could be the biggest year ever out there, and I hope everyone will take some time to attend. They have a fantastic concert lineup as well as a packed schedule of events for, for all ages. I'll be out there pretty much all day, every day, both at a booth for my personal business and at the Republican Party's booth in the exhibit hall. So if anyone has anything they want to discuss, or if you just want to say hi, I encourage you to stop by. On another topic, I'm sure you all received the same email I did from Michael Gainer from Go Rail asking us to sign on to a letter opposing legislation that would increase the weight limits on commercial vehicles from 80,000 pounds to 91,000 pounds. It was something that I was unfamiliar with, so I forwarded that letter to Gene and asked his opinion on it. He got back to me, told me that increased weight limits would indeed be a problem for Sweetwater County roads. And then it is also an issue that the National Association of County Engineers is also concerned with. So unless any of you are opposed to it, I think I'll respond to Mr. Gainer's email and sign on to their letter of opposition. On the eighth, the Recreation Facilities Committee will, will need to get some updates on the state shooting sports task force. And on the ninth, planning and zoning will have their monthly meeting. Then on the 10th, I'll attend an SEDC meeting. Pretty light couple of weeks as far as meetings go, but I'm sure as summer comes to an all too soon close, we'll make up for it. And I think that's all I have for you today and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks Commissioner. Any questions?
I kept that under 37 minutes.
For Commissioner Richards, commissioners. Appreciate the report. Looks like I'm up next. A little bit repetitive in some areas, but that seems to be common. At the conclusion of our last meeting, as Commissioner Richards alluded to, he and I met with Public Works Director Gene Legursky, who gave us a tour of the old Carnegie Library. There's a lot going on with that building, including some quite interesting structural work inside, which is one of the many issues we'll need to address in our time ahead, as Island pointed out. Afterwards, Gene took us around the courthouse and showed us every room and department where we quickly learned where all the nice offices are. They're on the third floor by the way, and they're locked up like the state penitentiary for those of you who haven't had the opportunity to view them. It's actually quite similar to the newly installed and secured entrance to the hallway leading to each of your offices, I noticed. But don't worry, Sally has informed me that she knows every nook and cranny in this facility to help protect the lone commissioner at the front. We have the copier, plenty of snacks, and we enjoy the public interaction. So we'll be sure if anyone stops by to see you all, that we'll page your offices first before calling court security down to escort them to you. I too attended the Republican Party Central Committee meeting on the 22nd and learned a great deal about all of the eight candidates who applied. You all were in attendance, which I felt was a great display of leadership, interest and respect for the position and willingness to ensure that we all continue working together effectively and efficiently as we struggle with the difficulty in selecting from their top three later today. I commend the Central Committee for their efficient, organized and professional handling and their part of this important process. On the 25th, Commissioner Slaughter and I met to discuss the specific purpose tax and to orient one another on where we're at up to this point. Not a whole lot additional than what we shared a couple of weeks ago, but Rob has been diving in headfirst into this role, which I know he'll share with you all shortly. I appreciate Rob's effort and hitting the ground running to get this process moving right along. Later that morning, I met with Taylor Jones after he reached out and wanted to further express his interest in filling the vacant commission seat as one of the three finalists. We had a good discussion on a variety of topics, including some of his ideas that he had, should he be selected. That afternoon, Casey Doak reached out with the same interest and we met for about an hour or so discussing different issues facing the county, along with general discussion about some of his thoughts and ideas. I appreciated my time with both candidates and thank them for reaching out for further education. Port of Health counseled their July meeting this month, so I have no report for you there, but we'll catch up with them at the end of this month. I attended the mental health board meeting virtually last Wednesday as I was out of town. Their main topics for the month were discussions relative to this year's agreement with us and needing some further clarification on a few items. Mainly their attorney working with our attorney. But there appeared to be an urgency from their board and wanting to sign and approve this year's agreement in a more timely fashion. Which I hope is the case. We can all begin working on having a relationship that simply isn't contractually based. Their other important business was in selecting an architectural firm to begin the capital improvements to the facilities they've updated you all on recently with the ARPA funding they rewarded. On their agenda was the approval of four standard form of agreements between the owner and the architect. Since the county is the owner, they had to make some last minute changes to the original agreements. Because they listed Southwest as the owner, but they did go ahead and approve it under the contingency that each of those forms be updated and approved by our board prior to execution. So they'll be coming before us at our August 15th meeting, asking for our blessing on those agreements. As we've all been made aware, Wyoming statute nine dash one dash five 10 requires the Department of Audit to establish minimum financial training for public officers. We're beginning to field questions relative to how far this extends in the vagueness of public officers. Does that include staff, component units and other boards we appoint to? I believe it does spell out special improvement districts and joint powers boards, but we've discussed this a bit internally. And it sounds like Clerk Lane will be reaching out for further clarification from the Department of Audit, so we can provide direction back to some of those who brought forth the concern. As you all know, this obviously does apply to us and that training must be completed by July 1st of 2024. The monthly Baron Commission meeting is tomorrow afternoon and I look forward to catching up with our neighboring partners as it's been a couple of months since all of us could be in attendance for that one. Throughout the remainder of the week, I too plan to attend some of Wyoming's big show and look forward to the lineup and various other events that Candy and her staff have all put together for the community to enjoy. As Commissioner Richards pointed out, we'll have a Recreation Facilities Committee meeting next Tuesday. And aside from all that, I look forward to the employee appreciation barbecue at our next meeting on the 15th here at noon at the courthouse. That pretty well wraps up my couple of weeks and I'd stand for any questions. With none, Commissioner Slaughter, you're up next.
First, I would like to extend my sympathy to our chairman for the public hovel, which he calls an office. And I would like to express my appreciation for the fact that he will stand in front of us and at the door as we hide behind it in our offices behind the new door, which was just put in. On July 20th, I attended the Coalition of Local Governments CLG, which CLG meeting in Lyman discussed several topics that are going on in Southwest Wyoming. I heard again from Richard Stem and the CLG board was excited to hear that we are considering forming a collaborative with the Ashley National Forest. Yep, I'm pleased to report the CLG also agreed to pay one half of the expenses that which will require to bring Richard for his consultation, which we had at our last meeting. On the 22nd, I spent my birthday at the Republican Committee meeting held to provide three names to the commission to appoint the vacancy, to fill the vacancy created by Commissioner Schoenfeld's resignation. The meeting was very organized and run very professionally. I'm confident that the three names sent forward to the commission are quality individuals and that any of the three would do well in assuming the appointment. On the 24th, I attended the Hospital Building and Grounds Committee meeting. There was nothing earth shattering at this meeting. They just reviewed upcoming projects and their progress toward those projects. I also made contact with Alan Matlos of the underwriting firm Stiefel that will be working on the bond issue for the six cent projects. Had an excellent conversation with him and he supplied me with a tentative schedule of the process moving forward. The tentative bond sale will be September 26th with the bond closing on October 10th. It was once again constant, later that day I was again contacted by DAG, his EMS director Heilman with concerns about not being able to get information from Wyoming State EMS. I tried to facilitate a conversation between the entities, but I too wasn't unable to reach state EMS. I will continue to try and resolve this issue. On the 25th, I attended the Golden Hour Senior Center Regular Board Meeting. There was good discussion of their activities. They're still waiting for advice from their investment committee on the investment of some of their operating funds. On the 27th, I met with former county commissioner and former chair of the 2012 Six Cent Joint Powers Board, Reed West. He was gracious enough to spend a couple of hours with me and helped me to understand several aspects of the joint powers board process that I was not aware of. It was very informative and will help me tremendously moving forward in my role with the Six Cent Committee. I also set up meetings with each of the three potential candidates that were sent forward to us to fill the vacant county commission seat. I spent about an hour visiting with each of them and just generally getting to know them. I also interviewed several references for the candidates and was able to get a good feeling for what their individual strengths might be. By doing so, I think I was able to get a better understanding of each of them and feel confident that I can cast my vote for the applicant that will be the best appointee. I also spent time talking with Assessor Devis, Clerk Lane, Planner Bingham, Grants Writer Marshall, Deputy Attorney DeLeon and Public Works Director Legursky in Hooton. And I do have the Public Works Department a report for the month. This is Gene's report on buildings. We have been working on all of our third quarter preventative maintenance items. The LED lighting project is going well with the purchasing building being completed two weeks ago and the basement of the Green River courthouse being 90% complete. They will start on the garage area and the second floor in the middle of this week. Roden Bridge Department, they have completed approximately 70% of the county dust control, control project. This project is going well and the two R and B foremen have committed to getting this project done in record time with good results. crews are also hauling material to the roadways that are being impacted by the new surge in oil and gas drilling out by Wamsutter and Hiawatha. We also started mowing the roadside ditches last week. This project will take approximately three months, but is vital in helping control weeds and also snow drifting on the roadways. Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Department is keeping its head above water. We've had some minor setbacks with our irrigation systems in a couple of different parks. We have them fixed up and running again. They're also working on getting all of the parks irrigation systems online so that they can be monitored remotely. Engineering, the Lagoon Road project is proceeding well. All of the culverts are installed and the subgrade is prepped. The contractor will pour 500 plus cubic yards of concrete tomorrow and will try to pour 500 plus every week until the project is done. The application for fiscal year 24 CMAQ will be submitted to YDOT this week. The fiscal 23 overlay project is 90% complete. We are waiting on the contractor to mobilize to finish the paving on the Blairtown Road. SNL Industrial has started on the countywide paint striping project. They have completed approximately 10% of the centerline road miles. That completes Gene's report. Mr. Chairman, I would also like to state I am looking forward to the fair. I will spend a couple of days out there. My wife and I will enjoy a couple of the concerts and our families coming in to also enjoy it. So we're looking forward to that. That will conclude my report and if there are any questions, I would stand for them.
Any questions for Commissioner Slaughter, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just to comment on, on the report of the lights, if you haven't looked up, they look fantastic. They make a huge difference in, in, in where we work. So thank, thank Gene for that.
Thanks for the report Commissioner. Job well done. And it looks like Mr. Tillman, you're up next.
On July 20th, I attended the Coalition Local Governments meeting and we received all of our updates on our federal plans and projects in Southwest Wyoming, including the state sage grouse plan, which we will be ratifying comments on. We had a special workshop after that meeting with Rich Stem again on the collaborative and the importance of being able to participate with the Forest Service on the Flimmy Gorge National Recreation Area and the Ashley National Forest in helping them provide funding to get projects done. I want to thank Commissioner Slaughter for taking a, a big lead on that collaborative effort. July 22nd, I also attended the GOP selection process. It was very thorough and I was proud of our precinct committee men and women. I, I think they were very serious in their intention of, of bringing us three really good candidates. So congratulations to you three and thank you to all eight who participated and to the precinct committee men and women and, and the committee that put it on that day. On July 25th, I met with John Edens from YDOT on various issues on Highway 28, Highway 372 and Highway 191 as it goes through Farson and the, the speed limit safety issues. I attended the Young at Heart Board meeting. I think that board is doing a great job of getting back on their feet and they're showing positive cash flows. They had Billy Sinashale report on their home health program and it's showing positive numbers now. And they're also looking maybe to do some outreach for home health in the Farson area. The county, we are their major funder, but they say that it is important because it is a local source of funds that helps them get grants as a match. So they did present a pie chart of where they get their funding. They reelected their current office, officers. Suzette Williams is their chairman again, Kent Parentas, Secretary, Richard Vander slot, Vice Chairman and Kevin Maloney Treasurer. I just want to congratulate that team for working hard to get a positive money flow in that agency. July 26th, we had a special meeting that Rob had organized with Sue Icoff, the forest supervisor from the Ashley and Ranger Brian Wilson from Manila to talk about the collaborative. We had Eric Bingham there, Rob Slaughter and myself. Again, thank you, Rob. July 29th, I attended the Red Desert Rodeo. It was, it was a great show, a lot of audience participation. The stands were full, so we're off to a great start with the fair that's going on now. Upcoming on Thursday, we have our monthly Dry Creek Trona meeting. Project West Solution Trona Mine and Soda Ash Processing Facility near Granger, this would be the Jenner Private Turkish Family Proposed Trona Mine, is having public meetings. Wednesday, August 16th, four to seven PM, Green River Hampton. And Thursday, August 17th, four to seven PM, Holiday Inn in Rock Springs. The Kimmer on the 14th and Evanston on the 15th. They have met with us, but I plan to attend one of those just to, just to learn more. Coalition of Local Governments meets on August 17th. Our Wyoming Landscape Conservation Initiative will be doing tours in the Saratoga area, I believe August 21st. The BLM Resource Advisory Council, which I've been named to has had to move their meeting date to October because of the time they have to advertise the meeting and they had planned to do it September 6th, but they didn't get it off the ground quick enough. So I'm looking forward to that meeting. I think it's important for them to take public input on what the BLM is doing through that advisory council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for the report Commissioner. Any questions for Commissioner Tillman? All right, good work commissioners. Moving right along on the agenda is tab C. This will be the action and presentation items. First up is the mill levy approval. And we've got Assessor Devis here to present. Morning Dave.
Morning commissioners. I apologize for sending this to you late yesterday afternoon. But we work, Mary Ann Stacy, my chief appraiser and the clerk's office and I work very closely together, trying to get all the budgets in from all of the taxing authorities, trying to get their mill levy calculations done. It's a last minute deal, always has been, probably always will be. That's why you didn't have information prior to the meeting this morning. But what you're looking at is a spreadsheet that we actually use to calculate the mill levies for all the taxing authorities in the county. We do this every year. We check it, we check it again and we throw it away and start over and check it a couple more times. But we do, we're very confident in the mill levies that we calculated for all of our taxing authorities. And we just need your approval today in order to continue that process and fill out the state board of equalization mill levy report, get that submitted for, for approval. So that's why we're here today.
Appreciate that Dave. Any questions commissioners? In the report? Did it mention Dave? I saw obviously the 12 mills, but what is the total mill for the county? Do you have that? Pulled up anywhere?
The total for the county?
Yeah, I mean, I, it seems like in the past it was around 73 mills.
There's so many different tax districts. I mean, some of them have municipalities, some of them don't. There's, I mean, there's, they range anywhere from 80, 80 to just looking at my worksheet here. 62 is the lowest one, 63. So it's, it's kind of a wide range. The one that was very interesting to me and I did forward you part of a presentation was the Improvement District in Farson. That's one I've been concerned with for quite a few years. That Improvement District has to levy enough to cover the bonds and interest. And as the coal value in that district went down, the burden of, of paying the taxes on to satisfy the debt schedule was actually shifted to the people in, in Farson. It was no, the minerals kept going down. But we had a substantial increase in the natural gas production in tax district 102. And it actually is going to bring that mill levy for the Improvement District down from almost 13 last year to about 6.4 mils. So the people in Farson are going to see a substantial reduction in their overall mill levy, which is going to help them with their overall tax burden as well. Again, that wasn't part of the approval process, but it's something I try and update every couple of years. So you guys are just aware of that. And Miss Commissioner Slaughter had asked me when that was going to be paid off. And the last time I had checked, I thought it was July of 2025 is when that, that debt schedule would be paid off. And then that mill levy would drop completely off of their, the role for the tax district 102.
Interesting. Appreciate that information. Any other questions, comments commissioners? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the mill levies presented by County Assessor Dave Devis.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Davis, you might want to attend the senior luncheon in Farson to give him some good news instead of when you had to go answer all the protests about taxes.
I, I did actually forward this to one of the residents up there that I'm very familiar with, and I think the word will spread relatively quickly.
They meet the second Monday, 11:30 for lunch, the seniors.
Good to know.
So if you'd like to attend.
Sure. Do you have a motion and a second on the table? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. Thanks Dave, appreciate it. Next up, under the action and presentation items is C point two, a request for permission to install a fire pit at Pioneer Trails. We've got Logan Wadsworth here with us this morning from Boy Scout Troop 312. Morning Logan.
Hello chairmans and commissioners. I'm here to propose a fire pit for the Pioneer Trails County Park. I want to double check that all of you got the photos and graphs I sent into you.
We did, thank you.
Okay. So on our first page, there's a couple aerial photos of the park. The top one is a photo of the whole park and the bottom one is a photo of Loop B, which is where where we want to put in the first pit. So if you look at that second photo, if you look at the red building, if you look to its top left corner, there is the old playground right there. And I met with Mr. Legursky and Commissioner Richards a couple of weeks ago. And we decided that we And we decided that we wanted to put it in where that old playground is because the equipment has to come out because of a health risk. So we decided that's where we wanted to put it in. So and with further approval, we are gonna also have to put one in the bigger park up by the main pavilion that also has to come out because of safety hazards. If you want to look at your next page, there's a photo of what the fire pit will look like when completed. So it's going to be made out of brick with gravel on the inside and then a metal liner put inside of the gravel and a drain pipe to drain water from weather. That way it doesn't cause damage to the bricks. Do you guys have any questions so far?
Just for clarification, are you asking to install two of these?
Yes.
Okay.
We're asking for at lea- at least one. And then if you guys would further approve the second one, that'd be awesome. So the next page is just the type of brick we want to use. We found the brick at Walmart there, or not Walmart, sorry, Home Depot. And a lot of the materials will be coming from Home Depot as well. Just because they have the materials and they're one of the local businesses that actually carry the materials. So if I can point you towards our last page, it's the money related items. So it covers all of our materials in the top rows. It covers their cost per item and how many of them we need for their totals on the right hand side. So for our brick, it's to come out to five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The metal bought, the mail pits going to be bought from Pacific Steel Recycling. And they calculate out the cost to be two hundred and thirty-two dollars for the bottom plate and fifty-eight dollars for the sides, which will be welded together to make the pit that you saw in the other photo. And then we'll use landscaping glue to put all the bricks together to hold the pit together overall. And then the gravel is eighteen dollars per ton and we needed roughly six tons. And then they also have a two hundred and thirty dollar delivery fee from the Sunrock Company. They are a local company out by Grayson or sorry, they're a local company out here. So and then there's also a drain pipe that will be put in, in between the bricks towards the bottom of the pit to allow water to drain out from the pit during weather. That way the pit does not have excess stress from rainwater. The bottom few rows are calculate totals from each of the three places we'd have to buy materials from. One is Home Depot, one is Sunrock and one is Pacific Steel. Each of their totals are calculated without tax and with tax. Pacific Steel was very nice and calculated the tax beforehand. So I didn't have to calculate that, which was very nice of them. At the bottom in a red number is the total cost of all the materials. And any unused materials can be returned to Home Depot or their various location for refund to the county. Any questions from you guys on any of it?
Thanks, Logan. Very well put together. We appreciate the background. I assume those costs are just for the one pit. Is that right?
Yes. So for a second pit, it'd be double that cost.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would assume this is a part of a, an Eagle Scout project for you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I commend you on doing that. It looks like you've done your homework. You've put together a great presentation. I have a couple of sons and a couple of grandsons that are Eagle Scouts, so I really commend you with respect to the program. I think you've done a good job in putting this and I think it would be a great asset to us at our park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I said, Logan, good, good job on your presentation. For those that you don't, that don't know, Logan came to, to Gene and I almost a month ago to, to, to start this conversation. And his first question is what, what could Pioneer Trails use out there? And, and me and Gene kind of thought a fire pit would be useful and, and as we've approved overnight camping out there and we said any fire had to be in an established fire pit. We thought putting a fire pit out there would be a, a great idea and, and as a, as an Eagle Scout project, I believe if I'm not mistaken, you would, you would provide all the labor if we provide the, the materials.
Yes, sir.
What you're proposing. And I guess a question out to, to Gene or Public Works Director, is, is this within your budget to, to do the materials? Would, would you directly make the purchases of the materials? So we probably wouldn't have. So we wouldn't pay the sales tax on it. And, and if you haven't gone out there and played on the playground equipment before Gene takes it out, probably the last chance you'll ever have of playing on a merry-go-round. Don't do it in the sun though. It'll, it'll burn. So Mr. Chairman, I, I would move that we approve of this request and, and authorize permission for, for Logan to, to do the labor on a project like this.
Do you have a motion to approve this request by Commissioner Richards? Do we have a second? Second.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, Island is your motion to go, go forward with both of the fire pits?
Yes, yes.
Yes. I would second that.
Any other discussion?
I just have a question for Gene. Will there be any children's playground equipment in the park? There will be some left. Okay. Thank you.
We do have a motion by Commissioner Richards to approve this request for up to two fire pits. We've got a second by Commissioner Slaughter. All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Logan. Job well done. You got a bright future ahead of you.
Thank you Commissioners and Chairman for approving my project and use of your time. Thank you.
Send us some pictures when it's done. We'll look forward to it.
Okay.
Thank you. Item three under Tab C is up next on the agenda. We've got the SWMP better known as the Southwest Wyoming Manufacturing Partnership Progress Report today. With us, we've got Rec Mountain Power Regional Business Manager Ron Wild. And there's a few others mentioned on the agenda, but I don't see them here, so I'll
I got your back, Ron.
I'm glad so. Fred Varnerans, it looks like Superintendent Craig Behringer has joined us. And some representation from the college, it appears.
So, Mr. Chairman, Kim Dale was going to be with us today, but she has a conflicting appointment over in Laramie. So she sent Amy Murphy to take her place. And then online we have Fred Von Arons with Genesis Alkali. So I'll go ahead and lead us out. Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to the Commissioners and bring you up to speed on what we've been doing for the last five years. Because there seems to be a lot of noise out there in the world about Southwest Wyoming. Okay. So, and that's a good thing. We want to make sure that you guys are aware of it. So looks like we've got the slides coming up. Got to love technology. It'd be much better than me drawing on a chalkboard. So back in twenty seventeen, the Wyoming Workforce Development Council came up with the next gen partnerships. And we had our first meeting in twenty eighteen with the state where we rolled this out across the state. So the Workforce Development Council partners with the workforce system across the state. And we would try to work with all of the individual regions to provide strategic support for developing a better workforce. And we oversee the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act for the state. And we use those funds to help train employees and so forth across the state. And now Fred's going to go ahead and pick it up and talk to you guys about the specifics of the SWMP executive team.
You still with us, Fred?
Yes, I am. Hang on, just give me one second. Thank you very much. So what we, what we really are all about is a good diverse group of folks that are business education and community. Ron Wild, Regional Business Manager. And this is where you want me to start, right, Ron?
Yes.
Myself, Craig Rude, Matt McQueen from Exxon, Carl Lemke from CAT, Lauren Schoenfield, who as you know is moving out, but has done a wonderful job for us. Jed Virgil from Union Wireless, Marty Carrillo, Elizabeth Acosta Kuhn and Kylie Ingersoll, who I think most everybody knows from the Business Alliance or Business Council, excuse me. And when, when you really look at from the education side, the list really includes Sweetwater County, but Ron and the team are working very hard to engage folks from outside the region. Obviously, Kim Dale. And the way we've structured ourselves, it's around the college support system. And it's a next gen kind of thing that the state worked on and with the community colleges and focusing on the area they serve and the school systems that are involved. In our case, five counties. That seems to work real well. It's served us well. So Kim Dale, Amy Murphy, who's Dean of Outreach, who's just done a phenomenal job. Certainly Kelly McGovern and Craig, who's here with us. And then from a government point of view, I'm on the, was on Ride and now that's continued and we'll talk a little bit more about that with Green River being a pilot for the follow-on work that Ride started, the Governor's Initiative. I'm on now on the Department of Education for the state and now I just got on the Charter Assessment Board as well. So Charter School Assessment. Ron represents the workforce development. And then the county commissioners as well. Okay. If we go to the next page, the most critical part about this is when we started this whole concept, this is all about the outcomes for our students. How can we help our students work their way through the K through twelve system into careers? The K through twelve system into community college and CTE opportunities. Or directly to associate programs at the college and or to the university. As we talk, we have business educators, government services, community working together to improve education. Raising the awareness of the entire community, alignment to better prepare our students for careers in the community and beyond, as I said. And this means also being good community citizens and planning. Some of the things we make sure that we get the students and advisors out to the schools. We make sure we get out into the schools ourselves and we'll be talking more about that. The results is developing and maintaining strategic partnerships. And you could read through this, but it's really sustainable practices, making sure that there's strategic partners between industry and education. What that means to me is when I first moved into town, I'd be talking to Kim's successor, her predecessor, I should say, excuse me, at the college. And we'd be talking about the needs of my company. Well, every company's doing that or should be doing that. We do the same for K through twelve. We were leaving it up to the school systems and the educators to synthesize what business needs. We flipped that model and asked that business gets a seat at the table. And we have the responsibility to say, we as a group collectively in this field can hire fifteen or twenty folks a year, even in a down year in this kind of a skill that we are not trained for in the community. And the first one we did was plan operators. Obviously, when you look at the big operating companies in this region between the Exons, the SIMPots, the Church and Dwight's and certainly the Fort Trona businesses, we're hiring a lot of operators every year just for retirement replacement. Well, when you give the school systems that kind of information, it helps them plan that they can put a program together, they can fill classes and the children will have an opportunity when they graduate for good careers in our region or beyond. So that's kind of strategic things that we're working on. And also I've been asked when I first came here, what does it take to get a job out? I was pretty embarrassed by that. We've been here seventy-five years. We owe it to the community to make sure they understand the educators, the community, parents, that they understand the engineering roles, the accounting roles, the human resource roles that are available to us. So that's the kind of strategy that we're talking about. So the strategic partners, businesses find the talent they need to grow and students get a career, not just a job. I really believe that if the students don't have their mindset on some concept, it makes it much harder for them to get through. Maintaining those strategic partnerships, you can see the kind of the landscape and some of the opportunities we've had over the years, some of the events we have. And we're very proud of each one of the member companies have, have done. And we work through making sure that we have workshops throughout the year to continue to engage more folks. Go ahead, Ron.
Actually Craig's going to take over for us.
Yeah. So thank you. We, at Green River High School, we, following the lead of the Southwest Wyoming Manufacturing Partnership, we have brought in on Wednesdays, they call it win, what I need now. I think, anyway, but that we brought that every Wednesday, we bring in businesses, industry to present to our kids. So we've had everything from our real, local realtors to the carbon capture group come in and they present job opportunities for our kids. Because what we've found is that we can't take kids where we wish they were at. We have to take them where they're at. And back in the nineties, about almost ninety percent of kids through high school had jobs. Now that is down to like between fifty and sixty percent. I don't have the exact with me percentage with me, but fewer and fewer kids work, have job experience in the workforce. So we have to provide those opportunities for them. And I put, we were one of nine schools in the district that got the Wyoming's Future and Lear- Learning Partnership through the Ride Grant. And we've, through the Southwest Wyoming Manufacturing Partnership, they helped us fill it out. A lot of what we're going to do is based on this. The Age of Agility, which I shared with you. It's, it's a great future of education document because it's not written by educators. It's written by people who actually are looking for people in the workforce. And it kind of lays a path of what should be done from kindergarten to sixth grade, sixth, seventh and eighth, and through high school. So we based our application on that. And so as we work through this, our goal is to get kids, mostly seniors into job and career readiness type opportunities while they're in high school, while they have the support from the high school, so they can get a better understanding of what the workforce is. We've, they've, we've also participated in the manufacturing days that Western Wyoming has put on. That was a great opportunity for our kids to see, for one thing, to see the campus of Western Wyoming. It was amazing, the number of kids, when we were coming back, teachers and principals said the kids didn't even realize there was a campus up there, twelve miles away. So just that opportunity So just that opportunity to be on the campus and some of the things that they've learned through that. So that, that is kind of our part in, in Southwest Wyoming Manufacturing Partnership.
Yes, because I think that is.
All right. So just kind of continuing on, kind of what we were talking about. In working together with the Southwest Wyoming Manufacturing Partnership, we actually, as you heard Fred mention, the very first program that we did was the Plan Operations, which you kind of see there is highlighted. And the most recent one is Power Line Technology. These were ideas that came from this group that brought them forward and brought them back to the college. And we worked not only as a team from the educational standpoint, because again, when you think about programs and you're developing programs, you need industry support to actually make sure they happen, not only from what equipment do we need, what are the skill sets that they want? And the most important piece, I think, is you're going to see this as we go through this, is where are we lacking on like the educational programs that we have to offer in the area? Both of these areas, we're the only ones in the state that actually have both of these programs, Plan Ops and Power Line. And just to kind of like lay the foundation a little bit more, we actually have a substation program that's coming on board as well. It'll actually be available fall of twenty-four. Again, another program that's only available at Western throughout the state. And this is all because of the business involvement and telling us what their needs are. So our goals for developing programs is always kind of to look at it more as a career versus a job. A job you can go in and you can leave tomorrow and you don't really care. A career is something you want to be at and you want to strive towards, you want to grow, you want to develop and all that. So we looked at it when we look at program goals and you look at like kind of the well paying. And I know that sounds crazy to say something like that, but you have to show that to especially the younger generation, the money. I always use my daughter as an example of it. Both my girls went into non-traditional careers. They went into the male dominated roles. One is actually an operator and the other's a CAD designer. And my oldest is a shopper, so I had to show her the money and believe me, Amazon thanks us every day for it. We have packages delivered on a regular basis, but she was able to go buy a car. She was able to buy a house and she's twenty-two. So you think about that and that's all because of these industries and making sure people are aware of what these are. You got stable careers. They're not going anywhere. I mean, you heard Fred talk about how long he was here. They're not going anywhere. So you have to kind of show them. These aren't places, I came from originally Illinois, and if you guys are familiar with Caterpillar, you know Caterpillar closed their plant in Illinois. And it was a huge devastation for the area and everybody was scared to die to go back to Caterpillar. Have you heard that here? I mean, Genesis hasn't gone anywhere. Rocky Mountain hasn't gone anywhere. So you have to show them that these are stable. The opportunities for growth, they're local and, and local is kind of put in perspective here in Wyoming. I mean, there's not things like right next door, but they're local. And just kind of continuing on here, how this got started, again, it's meetings with the key personnel. You can't start this unless you actually have a commitment from industry. And as you can kind of see here, this is actually our advisory board that was put together for this program. These individuals that are on there are not just, they attend a meeting, they actually are very active within the program. I'm not saying it because he's standing next to me, but Rocky Mountain Power, especially with the Power Line Program, has been instrumental as far as helping us out. As you know, to try and get an instructor to leave industry to come teach, the pay's not the same. So it's kind of a little bit of a challenge where you have to look at this. Well, we were kind of coming down to the wire on getting an instructor and Rocky Mountain Power was nice enough to actually offer us one of their employees if we couldn't get an instructor to get the program up and going. Now granted, we were paying that individual and they were doing it kind of were shifting schedules. But that's the partnership you need to make sure that happens. When our poles got delivered and we needed them installed, Rocky Mountain Power stepped up to the table and installed them for us. Their guys came out and did it. We've had a ton of donations that have come in from the different areas and that all helps kind of keep a program sustainable. This program also, just to kind of do a little bit of a plug for the state of Wyoming with the Wyoming Innovation Partnership, the funding from this came from that. I'm not even going to lie to you. A program of this nature is very costly and it takes great partnerships to do that. And in doing our application for the WIP funding, we actually had fourteen industry partners who put letters together. And I believe to date, I could be wrong, but I believe our college is the only one who's had the industry support letters like that on any of the applications that have been submitted. So it kind of shows you what is involved in order to get some of this. So again, kind of the mission of the program was to demand skilled diamond, to get the essential skills. Now you guys talk about essential skills and I know there's new terms for it, soft skills, all of that kind of stuff. That is showing up to work on time. Don't be on your cell phone. These aren't positions. I mean, these are safety type positions, right? Whether you're a plan operator alignment, you can't not be there at work. They have to rely on you. You can't call in sick because you know, you want to go skiing this weekend. It's, it's not how it works. I mean, you have to kind of have those essential skills and all that's kind of been embedded into the program. So the requirements of the job, and this again is focused on power line, they do have to have a CDL, obviously, to be able to drive some of the trucks and all of that. They are going to be required to do a drug testing and all of that. And we tell this to students upfront. Craig had mentioned how they have the win program and we actually came out and talked about the power line program, but we did it in collaboration. Rocky Mountain Power was there, Western was there. And the students have the opportunity to ask questions about the education program, but also about industry and get kind of that feedback at the same time, which is very critical when you're kind of working with the high school students because you don't want to just hear from educators. You want to hear from the people who are actually doing it. Okay. Again, I mentioned to you guys about the Wyoming Innovation. I showed here Lower Valley Energy over here in the Bridger Valley area. They've also done a ton of scholarships for us and they've actually hired quite a few of the students that just completed. Again, kind of focus on that. And we also had the commission out to kind of do it. Now, if you take a look at that picture there, in my looking at, it's on my right, I believe it's your left. That is actually the whole commission group that came out to Western Wyoming. And again, Rocky Mountain came and did a demonstration of what it would be like the students climbing the pole. So the two folks that are up there are actually Rocky Mountain employees. Again, this is in the evening. This was, they came and did this. So again, it's that partnership, that collaboration approach. Okay, Fred, I'm going to turn it back to you.
Good. I'm better with the mute button this time. So the, the real thing is the marketing and outreach and you know, Carl Lemke's not here, but his, his role in our team has really been to do just that. Get the word out, communicate. We have a monthly newsletter that goes out, something like a hundred and forty-ish respondents opening up and looking at it pretty much every, every month, which we feel really good about. And we're going to continue to do that. One of the things that we're really also strong in, it's important for us to recognize instructors. I like to say, if we had a meeting right now and asked each one of you, what instructor had a meaningful impact on your life or your career? And you thought about it for a minute, I bet it brings a smile to your face and you can think of one, two, three instructors. We talk a lot about the need for pay and that's clearly something in the public eye, or better pay for teachers and instructors. But if we don't respect the trade, the skill, the results, the individuals, I don't believe pay alone is enough. So we actually put a section in there recognizing some of the great work instructors are doing in our community and urge each one of you to take a look at that. Next slide, please. From an outreach, well, from an outreach point of view, that prior slide really kind of closed out what are, thank you. What are, no, the next one. We, one more slide ahead. That's okay. Hard to do this when I'm remote. There you go. And so you can, you can see here what our newsletter looks like and some of the, the link to get to that. And if anybody's looking for that, you can contact Ron, who really is our glue that really keeps this organization together. Ron Wild's just done a tremendous job helping us or any one of us to get that information. But the, the bottom line is getting the word out. And then I'd like to, enclosing, unless there's any questions, just back away and talk about overall Southwest Wyoming and as you from the rest of the state. Long before I got here, thirteen years now, Southwest Wyoming was known for being very active in business, education, community, pulling together, making things happen. And we actually are going to be talking in the Business Alliance in November about this very same subject, as well as what we do with the pulse of Southwest Wyoming, getting involved with legislators, city and county resources like yourselves to talk about community issues, what we're doing and how we can work together and make things better. I just want to put a plug in for this whole region and what you do commissioners, what the community does and how it's recognized throughout the state has been extremely effective. And I truly thank you for having us on and being able to talk about this important subject and recognizing our team for the work they're doing. And Craig, Kelly, certainly Ron. And, and it, it's just amazing how this is all coming together. And again, I appreciate your time and your continued support.
Are there any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Well, Ron, Craig, Amy, Fred, we appreciate you guys getting on the agenda to update us on some of your success. That's a lot of exciting news you've shared and I'm glad to see the advancements in career and technical education that was big in my life, growing up in high school. And I was quite bummed out when some of those programs went away. So I think this is a great avenue to and promote within and keep people here. So questions, comments?
I'd like to say one thing. So I, I serve on another committee on for education. It's a partnership between the Wyoming, University of Wyoming and, and the public schools in Wyoming. And one, some of the challenges we're going to face in the future is, I think, I was told that the University of Wyoming graduated one person in the CTE program this past year. And so, you know, we need to expand our CT programs, but we also need people that can fill those programs. So that's, that's going to be our next challenge.
Interesting. Comments, questions, commissioners?
I have a quote for you. My background is vocational education. And Barbara Van Meer, Arnold Van Meer, and I started the first co-op work program in the late seventies at Green River High School that put students on a job and paired them with a classroom. But the quote is John Gardner on excellence. The society that scorns excellence in plumbing, because plumbing is a humble activity and tolerates shoddiness in philosophy because it is an exalted activity will have neither good plumbing nor good philosophy. Neither its pipes nor its theories will hold water.
Very good. Thank you.
It's always important to have a good plumber.
I agree.
Hey, one question we had on your guys' presentation, you have their, your business team member, obviously, was Commissioner Shane Feld and she's vacated, moved on to bigger and better things. So how does that come about? Do you guys select that within? Is that something we need to backfill or?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if the commission would like to backfill it, they're more than welcome to. Commissioner Shane Feld volunteered whenever she was working out at Simplot. So she was providing a dual role, if you will, providing feedback to the governmental agencies as well as providing feedback into the organization on what Simplot needed to move their employee base forward. So if there is someone within the commission that would like to attend the monthly meetings, I will warn them that they are going to have to participate. This is not, the executive team is not one of those commissions or things that you just show up to and then walk away because I will look you in the eye. And after you spend some time on the board or you know, the team, you'll come to understand what Carl means when he says that significant success requires a significant relationship. But a significant relationship requires a significant presence.
I like it. Well, we will have probably further discussion on that after we get through today and we got some different liaison duties to discuss and things of that nature. But thank you all very much for the very informative presentation and for holding the line on your time. I saw you watching your watch there and we appreciate that because sometimes these three and or four yell at me for not keeping it true. So thanks very much for that.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we are about twenty minutes ahead of schedule here. Are you good with that, Christina? Okay. So we will move right along into item number four under Tab C. We've got the approval to purchase vehicles for county government offices and departments with coronavirus state and local recovery funds. And with us this morning is County Grants Manager, Christina Marshall. Good morning, Christina.
Good morning. I hope this will be easy for you. So, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, during the county's budget workshop process and specifically on May sixteenth, the commissioners reviewed an itemized list of all fiscal year twenty twenty-four grant projects, including the new ARPA Local Recovery Capital Projects that were approved in full as a bundle. The purpose of this request is to document the specifically authorized fiscal year twenty twenty-four ARPA Local Recovery projects for compliance with the federal uniform administrative requirements, cost principles and audit requirements. Or you may hear a lot of two CFR two hundred in the grants world. So the five projects that were bundled that you approved included an increase of twenty thousand dollars for the county corner. That is a suburban with accessories. This was originally approved in the prior list. However, the purchasing director has indicated that with inflation, supply chain, they think it needed twenty thousand dollars more of new projects. It included for the sheriff, nine vehicles. You may be familiar with the rotation plan that the sheriff has implemented. And so that is part of the quote unquote five for the price of three plan. And I spoke to Joe Tomich, the captain, lieutenant, or I believe captain number two at the sheriff's office. He indicated to me yesterday that they believe that they will begin implementing that plan next year. So we'll see the fruit of that work. That's where they turn in three vehicles and can get five. And that's of course, based on trade value. The third item is two vehicles for engineering and public works. That's to replace a two thousand eleven Tahoe and two thousand nine Durango for the Public Works Director and the Assistant Director. Next, for facilities maintenance, two vehicles, those again, to replace two, two vehicles. And then finally, one vehicle for parks and rec, that's to replace a three quarter ton truck with one ton. That total is one million sixteen thousand three hundred and nine dollars. And again, you already approved this. This is just to specify these projects separately. So the funding has already been obligated under the local recovery program. We'll be discussing that next in the packet. One important point is that during fiscal year twenty twenty-three, the commission authorized awarding bid up to the approved allocation outside of a commissioner's meeting due to the competition within the supply chain vendors. This request includes continuing that process or procurement procedure and having the purchasing director email the chairman, I believe her liaison, for authorization and then ratifying the bid award at the next commissioner's meeting. So again, that is because the vendors may not want to wait on your schedule. Is that clear? Okay. So it's a continuation. So there is no form to sign because again, these expenses were already included and approved in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget resolution under grant projects. I'd like to educate you all. So as a note, the federal ARPA Local Recovery payroll and also federal Pilt money are budgeted separately and are not included in the grant projects budget where we have all the federal state and foundation grants. That is because the, there's limitations in Munis software for budgeting purposes. So they're included, but not in the grant projects. So if you take a look at the ARPA summary, today's agenda item concerns the, in the middle of the sheet, the number two fiscal year twenty twenty-four capital projects. So those four items and then up above to the far right, the corner listed number one, an increase of twenty thousand dollars. Now, in summary, I'm sure the public's interested in knowing of the eight million two hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars in local recovery money, ninety-one percent of that has been obligated for public safety and improvements for public safety and government. 91% of that has been obligated for public safety and improvements for public safety in government buildings. And with our, within our sheriff's office. The ARPA Pilt Consistency Fund is remaining money that I wanted to remind you about that we will discuss in the fiscal year 2025 process. That's the consistency fund of approximately 3.7 million dollars. And behind that, I've provided you the resolution for transparency. So the grant projects again was just under $4 million. Listed at the bottom of page one of the fiscal year 24 resolution. And then if you go to page three, you'll see two paragraphs highlighted in yellow. That's where we classify the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. That's approximately 4.6 million dollars. And then that famous Pilt money payment in lieu of taxes, which is federal and it's tested in our audit for compliance. That's 3.8 million. So that total is approximately 12.5 million, just so you know, all these different funding sources and the puzzle that I have to deal with on a daily basis. So again, the, the focus of today was though to specify the ARPA Local Recovery projects. And with that, I am happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you, Christina. Always very detailed explanation, which is needed. So thank you for that background. Any questions, commissioners? Quiet bunch today.
I know I'm boring.
Oh, it takes major digestion.
And I think it's pretty straightforward. I appreciate all the additional attachments because it's a lot of numbers to jumble together, but I feel like you covered that well. So appreciate your efforts in that. If there's no questions, there is a recommendation to approve. So commissioners, I would ask what your pleasure is?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
I've moved to approve the purchase of vehicles for the sheriff's office, engineering, public works, facilities, maintenance, facilities, parks, departments, and increase the budget for the coroner's authorized suburban with coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
And I would second that.
You have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richards. We've got a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposing aye? Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Christina.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up, still about 20 minutes ahead. We've got the approval of a Converge One as a vendor for wireless project. With us this morning is IT Director Tim Knight and good morning, Tim.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Uh, before you, we've, uh, we budgeted $200,000 for a wireless project through the budget process. As the equipment is over 10 years old and needs to be replaced. Um, we select, um, we went through the process of trying to determine which wireless vendor to move forward with. And we can, we currently use Cisco as our networking platform. And so we decided because it made sense to stay consistent with that platform uh, to avoid extra training that may need to happen and other things. And Cisco's a very stable and great platform to do that. Uh, we started working with Converge One, who is the state approved contract vendor for Cisco. Um, with that, um, Converge One is required to give at least a 35% discount on all purchases. Um, in negotiating with them, we came to realize that July was the end of Cisco's fiscal year. And they were willing to give us 55% discount on our equipment. Um, if we could get that done in July. And so, um, we sent that out to, um, to get that done and, um, and via email. Um, we got that approved, but we need to ratify that approval of Converge One as our vendor to, by using the state contract. So what I'm here to do and, and the savings was somewhere around $78,000. So it was significant. And because they were giving us such a discount, we decided to ask for seven years of, uh, support under that percentage of, since they're going to such a great percentage, let's just get all the support we're going to need for, um, seven years, which is the maximum they'll go to. Um, and so, um, what I need from you is approval to utilize the state contract and approve Converge One as our vendor for our wireless per, uh, project. Um, we will be using them for professional services, but that's fairly insignificant compared to the equipment cost. It's probably closer to $10,000 is what we're looking at for that. So, um, that's what I have. Do you have any questions?
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, we appreciate, uh, the urgency and taking advantage of those savings. I mean, 78,000, almost 79,000, 78, 824 by taking advantage of that. So we appreciate you bringing that forth and bringing it back up for ratification here. Any questions, commissioners? If not, I entertain a motion to approve and ratify the selection of Converge One as a vendor for the wireless project.
Mr. Chairman, as IT liaison, this is one of my most honorable motions that I get to make as you're always referring IT issues to me. And I appreciate Tim saving me all the time. I make a motion to ratify, uh, using Converge One as the approved vendor for the wireless project utilizing the state contract.
Do you have a motion to approve and ratify by Commissioner Toman? Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposing aye? Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it.
Did you take note of that, Mr. Chairman?
You got a little aggressive there. Next up under tab C is item six. We've got the approval of a catering permit for Wesley White doing businesses Eden Saloon on August 5th, 2013 for Steve Hamm's 50th anniversary at the Eden Valley Community Center. Presenting with us today is Clerk Lane and welcome back.
Thank you, Chairman, commissioners. Um, actually you just stated it very well. I am here to, um, get approval for application for a catering permit for Steve Hamm's 50th anniversary through Wesley White doing business as Eden Saloon. For, um, August 5th to August 6th, 2023.
Any questions on the catering permit, commissioners? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Toman.
I want to congratulate Stephen Velinda Harns on their 50th wedding anniversary. And they will have the Sundowner Band playing at three o'clock at the community center in Farson on Saturday, the 5th. So I would make the motion to approve a catering permit for Wesley White doing business as Eden Saloon on August 5th. It says 2013, but I think it's 23.
Oh, yes, the permit.
Steve Harns, yeah, Stephen Velinda Harns 50th anniversary at the Eden Valley Community Center.
Good catch. Now we do have a motion to approve this catering permit by Commissioner Toman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye? Motion's unanimous. Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate it. We are 30 minutes ahead so far, commissioners. Next on the agenda is a break. Why don't we go ahead and take a 15 minute break and we will resume back here at 10:40? Where we will address the 2023, 2024 District Health Department Budget Agreement. 15 minute break.
We are out of break and going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting here. Where we left off under tab C was item number eight, the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four district health department budget agreement. I believe Mr. De Leon has prepared this for us for your review, which is in your packet. And John, did you want to discuss anything on this?
Sure.
Or Cindy looks like she's mentioned too, but or listed rather.
Yeah, so this is the district Board of Health Agreement for this year. Remember, this is the second year you've done this. Last year, you made some changes for to this agreement, which included the treasurer being the treasurer for the district health department. It included obtaining appropriations from the cities. The district health director does a great job at being responsive to you guys' changes and requests. This year, the primary change was with regard to changing the the male dedication to a total appropriation. So that is the primary modification that was done this year. The other changes are a few minor changes, changing the reference to the district to district rather than department and or recipient. So you'll see some minor changes in that regard. Other than that, the main the main addition, as I said, was to make sure that the total appropriation was identified and that the the way that the distribution is accomplished is such that it meets the needs of the district itself. We did have contact, Treasurer Cowan and I did have contact with the director to make sure that the twelve equal payments will would be sufficient and appropriate for their needs. So I believe that that will accomplish what they desire. And so what we are asking for is a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-three district agreement and for approval for the chairman to sign this or any follow-up agreement if there are minor changes that are non-substantive in nature.
Thank you, John. Appreciate the background there. As I mentioned earlier, their board did not meet in July, so they have not approved this yet, but anticipate that not being any issue since Treasurer Cowan and John have been in contact with them. Any questions on this agreement commissioners? Hearing none, one is your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-two four district health department budget agreement as presented by Deputy County Attorney De Leon.
Do you have a motion to approve by Commissioner Slaughter? Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion's unanimous. Did want to recognize that Senator John Cold has also joined us. Welcome, Senator. Two of you in the room today. No money still. Next on our agenda under tab C is item number nine, the indigent burial policy. We do have HR Director Gary McLean here. And good morning, Gary.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. I know this is why everyone is in attendance to read this. So real quickly, as you know, the county commissioners have lots of responsibilities throughout the statute and one of those areas is with respect to the burial of vintage persons and indigent veterans. In two thousand twenty-one, the legislature amended the statute relative to these responsibilities. And as a result of that, it it has some important effects and responsibilities for the county commissioners. And so we will run through those real quickly so that you understand what the source and what the requirements are. Three main statutes were affected by House Bill twenty-nine during the two thousand twenty-one legislature. The first one was eighteen-three, five oh four. That's under the county commissioners responsibilities. Specifically, eighteen-three oh four provides that counties responsible for the burial and cremation of any person lacking the means in his own estate or other resources to provide for burial or cremation and not receiving benefits under DFS programs, under the power program, SSI, Medicaid, things like that. So this was amended. This statutes always existed. What was amended was to, amongst other things, was to add cremation in addition to burial. It also was amended to set the maximum county responsibility at fifteen hundred dollars that that had always been there, but not the requirement for limiting the expenses to fifteen hundred dollars. So that was put in there. In addition, it provides that the county may request reimbursement from the state indigent burial fund through the DFS. They're the ones who administer that. And that's described in thirty-five, one, four, twenty-eight. Please stop me if you have any questions through that, but so the next area where where this House bill amended the statute that's relevant is nineteen fourteen, one oh one. This provides for burial of indigent veterans. It permits them to be buried in the veteran cemetery, which is in Casper or other veteran cemetery. Again, one of the major issues is it sets a maximum for the transportation costs. So if the body was transported to the state veteran cemetery, the limit would be five hundred dollars. The burial cost would be fifteen hundred dollars. Again, that's the responsibility of the county for indigent veterans. Any questions with that? And the next section provided some amendments to thirty-five, one, four, twenty-eight, which is under the Department of Health. And this really provides a state indigent burial fund. So it provides a mechanism whereby the state can collect money that can be used to reimburse the counties or DFS. And so the most notable thing in here is half of the collected funds can be used to pay the any costs that the counties request to be reimbursed, and half the collective funds can cover the DFS expenses. Obviously, this is subject to legislative appropriation. So if there's money, there's money, and if there's not. So with that said, we have to keep this in context. This is very, very rare. County Coroner Dale Mohanis does a great job of tracking down family members and friends. And associates take responsibility for folks whenever that's possible. And so this, I would say ninety-nine point nine nine percent of the time, he's successful in doing this. There are other parts of the state where that has not been the case, which prompted some of the legislative changes. But Dale's done a great job of that. And he's worked with the Veteran Services Offices and the folks that work for me to identify other veteran benefits that are available, such as headstones and other things, and verifying their veteran status. The coroner also has a statute under seven-four, two oh seven that provides that in the case of any unclaimed body that the he will be responsible for making sure the body is decently buried. May use any property found on the body to defray expenses. But if those don't cover those expenses, the county's response when property is found is inadequate. And so he has traditionally carried a small budget for this. I can only think I think of one time since I've been here that this is a occurred again. Does a great job of doing that. I think partly why this is coming to a head is as we move, families aren't always close, less and less people are disassociated from the communities because they've moved or taken jobs in other areas. And so there just aren't the kind of connections that we historically associate with people being able to take responsibility for for folks after they passed away. So these amendments under House Bill twenty-nine essentially require the county to have a policy. And so before you in your packet are a few documents. One is a resolution adopting the engine burial payment policies and procedures. The second one is the unclaimed and indigent burial cremation policy. That is so it spells out the procedure that'll be followed and the limits on the county's obligation. The third item is a sworn application for indigent barrel funds, meaning it's an affidavit. As you know, when someone makes a request, just like for a voucher, we require them to and they are required under oath to sign that they have met the requirements, that they've done due diligence and seeking other sources of of payment. And the final one is an application for indigent veteran burial funds, and that's again that they have sought all of the veteran resources, confirm that they're a veteran and that they are not dishonorably discharged. And once those have been done, then that process could be submitted to the county commissioners for review and consideration of payment for the expenses to bury those individuals. The city of Rock Springs and the city of Green River both have veteran portions of the cemeteries and are and accept indigent persons as well. In the case of veterans, the state veteran cemetery in Casper has space provided for that purpose also. So hopefully all of you have had a chance to review the policies and procedures that are in there again. I don't expect this to come up very often at all. But I think we have a changing demographic of both our local economy and national where people are more transitory, greater distances from family. We have lots of folks that move near to work. So, you know, there may be more in the future. But again, in order to comply with the process, to be able to seek reimbursement from the state, it's important for the county to have a policy. And so what's before you and what's being requested is one approval of resolution twenty-three dash oh eight dash CCO one, which is the resolution. And then the three documents, which are the policy and the two affidavits to consider those for approval today. So with that, Commissioner Richards, Deputy County Attorney John De Leon, County Clerk Lane, and others been involved in gathering information. This is kind of connects a lot of disparate areas of the statute to develop a policy and procedure should this come up so it can be handled appropriately. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions, and I'm sure they would also.
Thanks, Gary. Appreciate the explanation on this change. Any questions on the resolution policy or affidavits commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
Few months ago, I one of the funeral homes reached out to me with a because they they had an indigent person that they were caring for and and found that we did not have a process and that it was indeed by Wyoming State Statute, our responsibility to have a process. And so I I reached out to to Gary and John and Cindy and asked them to to work on it. And and they put a lot of time into it, a lot of effort to to come up with this with this policy. I think they did a good, great job. And with that, I would move to adopt adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero eight dash C C dash zero one, resolution providing for Suitor County Indigent Burial Payment Policy and Procedures.
And I believe we also need to approve the policy and the sworn applications.
Do we need separate motions?
We do that all together.
Resolution covered all that. I was kind of pointing to the resolution to cover all that.
Okay. We do have a motion to approve resolution twenty-three oh eight CCO one by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? I would just like to say thanks, Commissioner, for your work on that and also to staff. That was kind of interesting. I don't know if the issue is the right word, but uh a unique issue to address, so thanks for a well put together policy. We do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing aye? Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Gary. Appreciate your time. So we are about thirty-five minutes ahead of schedule here. Um next on our agenda. Is what everyone's been waiting for all morning. Usually we don't have this uh. Much excitement in our meetings. There's usually about two people sitting out there, which is typically the press, so thank you all for coming. We feel very special. Uh item number ten is the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners vacancy appointment process. Um as we all stated earlier, the four of us attended. The Republican Party Central Committee's meeting on the twenty-second, so we are pretty well versed on. Some of the different background and reasons for these three successful candidates to this point and why they want to fill the vacant role, so. Uh some of us have met individually with them, and we thought we'd provide the opportunity for a little more uh discussion today, so. The Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners has duly received three names from the Sweetwater County Republican Party Central Committee for consideration to fill the vacancy for county commissioner that was vacated by. Former Commissioner Lawrence Schoenfeld. And before we open up the floor for nominations, we wanted to give each of the three candidates an opportunity to address the board and give the board an opportunity to ask questions. As it's listed on the agenda. We will begin with John Casey Doak, followed by Taylor Jones and Jeffrey Ramey. So at this time, I would ask Mr. Doak if he would like to approach the body and give any speech and Q and A. Good morning to you.
Thank you, commissioners. Chairman, thank you very much for your time. With my help of my family here writing these speeches because they're a lot better at that than I am. So, good morning. I believe most of you people in this room know me, but for those of you who don't, my name is John, it was Casey Doak. I have not, I've had, let me start all over here again. So. I have not, I've had the pleasure of knowing, well, before you, before you, you have three final candidates, myself, Jeff and Taylor. And before I go any further, I would like to acknowledge both Jeff and Taylor. The selection committee has had a strong pool of candidates to choose from. They both have re- my respect, and I consider them both great advocates for our county and citizens. Commissioners, I would like to thank you uh for having me again this morning. I know that this has been an intense process for all of you and is not one that you're taking lightly. So I appreciate your time and thoughts on the matter of appointing a new county commissioner. Up to this point, you have had my, you've read my questionnaire, my letter of intent, my resume, as well as. Listen to me give a speech and answer questions in front of the selection committee. Over the course of last week, I've had the opportunity to sit down with each of you individually and discuss a wide range of topics. It is my hope through all of this, you have been able to to get a better understa- understanding of who I am, the type of per- person I represent. And I and what it would be for my citizens and what strengths I could offer the commission moving forward. I'm a third generation native to the area. My wife and I raised our children here and now have grandchildren who are also growing up here. I have a deep understanding of the culture and values of Wyoming residents hold dear. And I have a respect and appreciation for the county and everything it has provided my family and many others. I have been witness to the boom and bust cycles we experience here, and I felt their impacts just as many of our community members have. As a commissioner, I would be bringing with me a desire for stable growth and development. Growth that would support families who are living and working here currently, as well as the next generation of families moving into the area. I've been working in the local construction industry for the last forty years. With the last twenty-two, the two of those years being the owner of High Desert Construction. Through that process, I have had a hand in growth in our coun- county. I have worked with people in many different sectors of our community. I have provided stable employment opportunities. I have. I have had to make some extremely difficult decisions, and I've always pri- uh prioritized fiscal responsibility. Throughout my career, I have gained a vast knowledge and understanding of the construction and development process. With the projected growth numbers of Sweetwater County over the next handful of years, my knowledge and skillset make me uniquely qualified. To help to guide and help support the county commissioners. My past three years' experience on the county planning and zoning commission have given me an up-close and personal look at some of the issues facing our county. While holding this position, I remained open-minded to hearing all sides of an issue before making a decision. I've engaged in meaningful discussions with concerned citizens, county employees, affiliates, and my fellow commission members. I would approach a role on Sweetwater County Commissioner as much the same, remaining honest, respectful, performing my due diligence and keeping calm in stressful situations. Once again, thank you for your time and consideration for being your next county commissioner.
Thanks, Casey. Casey.
So I'm reading a Keaton, so.
Any questions for candidate John Casey Doak, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Toman.
Uh Mr. Doak, I think it would be good if you'd talk about one of the questions we had, if you'd be willing to run for office at the next election, because it's important that we have some consistency.
So me being a polit- not a politician, me being a concerned citizen, I wanted to run. Um but I can't, I can't honestly answer. I I would never lie to you to to get a position. I would not put yes. And explain, I put no in there because I can't tell you what's going to happen in a year and a half. Commissioner Toman, I I can't. If if I'm good at what I do and I can represent the people of Sweetwater County in a in a proactive matter, of course, I'll run again. But if I can't do the job or the job is too much, I want to, I I won't do it. But as of right now, I'm not going to start off and say, yes, I'm going to run, because I don't think that's a proper answer either. I don't think it's a proper question either, because who knows what's going to happen in a year and a half.
Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, I I can appreciate your honesty with that, and you and I discussed when we met together on that, and it's been kind of for the three newbies, because obviously we've had. You know, Commissioner Schoenfeld moving on, and so there's been that vacancy and. We're trying to get everyone kind of back together and working together as a team, and so we want to ensure that. You know, that's something that we can work together for long term. You never know how the election is going to turn out, even if you did run, so I can understand that, too. Um. It's a difficult decision today, extremely difficult. There's, you know, between the three of you, you serve on various. You know, boards and commissions, and you certainly, you know, hold and carry a lot of weight on planning and zoning, so that's very recognized and appreciated. Um.
I didn't want to start off with, you know, telling you what I think you want to hear. I want to be the honest person that I am. I could give you an answer of yes and decide in a year and a half, I'm not going to do that. That would just be lying to you and myself and the people of Sweetwater County. And if I can do a good job, which I think I can, of course, I'd run. But if I can't be effective and I can't help change and growth, because I'm I'm passionate about Sweetwater County. I mean, I've grown here, I've grown up here, I. I've told tales about us growing up in Rock Springs in the seventies and eighties and how much fun it was and how fortunate we were to live here. And I want the people, because Sweetwater County gets a bad rep as it is, I want the people of the rest of the state. To see what kind of community we really have, and people have, you have to be passionate to live here, passionate to be on the board. And I think that's what I bring, so.
Questions, commissioners, comments? All right, Casey.
All right, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next up, we have Taylor Jones.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Um first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your time meeting with me and talking with me one-on-one, attending the GOP selection. And of course, your time here today. Um I'm gonna take a few minutes and review a little bit about what I said in the GOP selection process. And a couple other topics that uh may help you make your decision today. Uh during the selection process, I mentioned my family. Uh my wonderful wife Stacy is here with me. She supports me a hundred percent in seeking this position. And my kids do also, however, they're working, so they couldn't make it today. Uh I've been a business owner for over, in business for over thirty years. Uh I've been on commissions for over twenty, about a dozen different commissions. Um those do include, obviously, the Memorial Hospital, Sweetwater County Board of Trustees, as well as Rock Springs Planning and Zoning. Worked with a variety of people and personalities in those years and those roles. Uh one thing I've learned is that it's valuable to have different opinions, different ideas, makes people think a little bit. Uh creates conversation, and that's where good decision-making comes. On the uh the Board of Trustees, we've had many different conversations and had to make some difficult decisions over the years. Um mostly around uh the future of the hospital and and where we want the hospital to go and where, how we want to position it for the future. Think we've done an excellent job of that. Um I believe the county commissioners uh have the the pretty much the same role. Uh with the expansion, particularly with the presentation this morning, but with the expansions and growth coming. Uh probably one of the key elements is going to be uh planning for the future, which is a broad umbrella. But uh it's it's going to be very important. Be some tough decisions to be made, but that's part of it. I also realize one of the the major tasks of the commissioners is to get through the budgeting process. Uh through the hospital, we do very similar budgeting process uh every year. In my time with the hospital, we budgeted in excess of seven hundred million dollars. So I'm very familiar with the process. I know how important it is, and it needs to be completed properly. Um I do also know that you all meet uh in executive session. Uh with the hospital board, we have executive session meetings at least every month. Uh I understand the the seriousness of those meetings, confidentiality of those meetings. Um I know that they are sensitive, because in many cases, they are handling handling H R personnel type inter- uh information. So, interesting, you asked that question earlier, but if selected, um I do intend to run in the next election. I don't feel it's fair for me to stand up here and ask you to put me in this vacant position, and in a year and a half, I walk away. Uh I know after speaking with all of you that uh you've got a heavy workload, you need help, you need some consistency. Uh so I don't think it's right for me to sit there for a year and a half and then move on to something else later. So as I stated before, been in business about thirty years. Uh I've been on a variety of boards and commissions. Uh feel that I'm uniquely qualified with my past to fill this vacancy, and I humbly ask for your support on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Taylor. Any questions, Mr. Jones, commissioners? Guys are getting off easy today. It's like we've sat through these already or something.
Quiet, yeah, interestingly enough. It's a quiet group.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask you if you thought you could fit in with this rowdy bunch, but you know, I don't know if that's a fair question.
I make no promises there. Actually, I actually did probably to to expand on that a little bit, you know, with with all the different boards and commissions I've been on um in the state around the United States. Think that's one of my strong points is the ability to get along with people. Um as I mentioned earlier, there's different personalities. There's always different personalities. That's a good thing. Uh but certainly uh need to be able to be professional and and um and get along with folks.
Well, much like your current position, Taylor, I think, you know, some of the work with your background that's taken place with the hospital has certainly been successful, and. Should things follow, you know, your way with this decision, I think that's going to leave a big void on that hospital board, so we really can't go wrong today with. Any of the three candidates, which is a good thing for Sweetwater County, but it's also a difficult thing for us is we try and pave that way, so we appreciate. Your interest and for presenting to us today, and. We'll move right along.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Taylor.
Yes, sir. You done?
I think so. Everyone's been quiet today. I'm about to start slamming the gavel. Uh next, we've got Jeffrey Ramey. And. Good morning to you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commission. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity. I gotta bring this down. Those other guys are tall. I want to thank you for the opportunity uh to apply for this position. I'll just state right up front, I was fully intent on running in in the twenty-four election uh before this came up and uh will run again. Uh whether I'm chosen or not. Um. I put very much thought um eight to ten years, actually, before diving into politics. I do have family members who were in politics and and I saw some of the uh successes and tragedies of their careers. Um so I put a lot of thought into it. Um I was heavily involved in different churches. Um I I currently chair our church board. Um so it was a big decision for me, and and I didn't want to jump in too soon until I had gotten uh my life, my business. Uh and my family raised and in a position where I could devote the kind of time and effort that setting on the commission would require. Um. Anything I pres- pursue uh in my life, and it doesn't matter if it's small or large, I do it with much thought and prayer. Um I will not jump into something without careful consideration and looking at all the facts. Um. One of the advantages that I have is I see and speak with numerous people every week. Customers, uh people that see me on the street, um a trip to Walmart for me and my wife is usually an hour, hour and a half to pick up a. Box of garbage bags. So um I do speak with a lot of people. I hear a lot of different opinions. I hear a lot of things that are that people are angry about. And it's usually because they don't have all of the information pertaining to the subject they're speaking about. Um I will commit the time and energy to this commission in the same way I do in all areas of my life. I think when I spoke with uh Commissioner Richards and and Commissioner Slaughter, um I'm ADHD. I'll just tell you that right straight up. I learn fast and I move fast. Um I don't fool around with things. Uh so my energy level at my age shouldn't be, but it is. I I do twelve to fourteen hours a day still and and work sometimes six and seven days a week, so. Um I will say that I've completed the state-required online course for board members. I believe uh you brought that up, Mr. Chairman, earlier. I have completed all that. Um. I do have good people skills. I haven't been beat up yet too much, and I always say if you can sit on a church board, you can sit on any board. They're rough, and I've sat on several. Uh I'm an idea person. Uh some of my ideas are rough, and other ideas I'll throw out just to garner participation from others. And to break, get them to look at things from another perspective. Um I always like to look at things from various perspectives and and do my research and and use a lot of data to. To come up with ideas. I I use various sources. Um and I I take it very seriously when making decisions that affect the lives of others. Okay, and and I believe that every decision we make affects the lives of others in some form or fashion. And sitting on this commission, you're affecting the lives of all of the citizens of Sweetwater County, and that is a very heavy responsibility that I take seriously. Um I'll say again, and I've I've said it before, I do not play favorites. Okay, um I see everyone's point of view as important and relevant, and I believe everyone deserves equal consideration. Um when I say I don't place, play favorites, I I keep it by the book. It has to be by the book. Um I prefer to look ahead and be prepared for what's coming, so I'm always forward-looking. Um failing to plan is planning to fail. Any questions?
Thanks, Jeff. We appreciate that. Any questions, commissioners? Well, Jeff, I'll start off. I uh didn't hear from you, and so you and I didn't have the chance to meet one-on-one, but obviously we ran against against each other last year, and I attended. Like we all did, the Central Committee's meeting, so I'll ask you the same questions I I asked both the other candidates, and it's. Kind of a series of questions, but. This new administration has worked really hard this year on getting things turned around and working together as a team and, you know, not grandstanding and and making sure that if we do have disagreements, we agree to disagree and and we move forward, because that's. You know, how we handle business, and the most success comes from that. So I'm curious on your thoughts on how you believe we are currently operating, if there's. we are currently operating, if there's things you would change, and if you feel like you could fit in with that mentality.
Well, I, I did some research on you guys, actually. Before I, uh, applied for this, I, I checked each one of you out as thoroughly as they possibly could. And one of the reasons I went ahead and applied is because I felt like I could work with, with all of you. Known Commissioner Richards for a while and Commissioner Slaughter for a while. I believe you know most of my wife's family. And I don't have a problem working with anybody. You're probably the one I don't know as much about. But that's okay. And, and I've talked with Commissioner Thoman, not at length, but on several occasions. I don't have any problem at all. I, like I said, I believe everybody's opinion is, is equal. I'm not married to my opinions or, or my ideas. And I like to throw things out sometimes so that everybody can throw more in because I believe the more information you have to make decisions, the better off you are.
Fair enough. Questions, comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, there's just, just a comment, and this is for everyone, I think. This is a very strange process that we go through. It's a very important process. And I think because of the nature of the process, it, it seems odd to me today that we would have each of you here and we would not ask questions of you. And that probably seems very odd to those who are watching. But I think the reason for that is each of us has been stated many times before, participated at the Republican Party's selection process, saw each of you, spoke with each of you at that point in time. I had the opportunity to sit down with each of you one-on-one, to get to know each of you a little bit better. I think that that was extremely important for me because I believe this is going to be one of the most important decisions that I make as a county commissioner and, and filling this appointment. So, you know, as I say, I think it looks kind of odd, but I, I do believe that we have done our due diligence. I am very pleased with the three candidates that we have. I think the Republican Committee did an excellent job in selecting those candidates. I, I would say even looking at just the eight people who, who made application, all eight were, would have brought viable benefit to this board. So I, I think it's been a good process. I think that we will come up with an excellent person who will represent Sweetwater County, and I'm grateful to everyone who's participated.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other questions or comments for Mr. R. Mai? Jeff, thanks for coming forward, and we appreciate your time today. So this will move us right into the difficult part, commissioners. We do have, after this appointment process, the oath of office, assuming we can make a decision. And not get tied on that vote or things of that nature, but there will be the oath for the newly, the new duly-appointed Sweetwater County Commissioner. Judge Lavery is in a hearing as we speak, but that's anticipated to be over by about 10:30 or so, so immediately following this discussion and vote. As soon as he's available, he'll be down to issue that oath. So we will keep the meeting live throughout that process. And if we have to take a quick break until he's able to arrive, that's what we'll do. So before we get into opening the nominations, commissioners, I thought I'd ask if there's any of you that would like to discuss or share your thoughts prior to moving right into the vote?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thoman.
Well, I don't want to restate everything that has been said, but you've, I know you've, as three candidates, have had 10 days of agony of wondering which one of you is gonna move forward. And we, as commissioners, have had 10 days of agony, and really, it's been very difficult to, to sort out because you each have tremendous strengths and you will leave tremendous voids if we, of the top two, if we pick either one of you, you're gonna leave a vacancy on the hospital board, or we're gonna leave a vacancy in this chair for planning and zoning, so it's been, it's been grueling for us as it has for you. And so I guess we have just asked for a divine guidance and hope that we make the right decision today. Thank you for your patience and your support. You've done a great job.
Any other comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
I, I want to thank all three of you. I consider each of you friends, which means I have to disappoint two of you. And, and that's always difficult, but that's, that's the position that the voters put me in. Each one of you brings unique skillsets to this table. And each one of you could do this job, and I think each one of you would be successful in this job. So we have to make the determination who we think is going to fit in right now with us. It's, it's a little different than a, than a full election process where, where, where voters, thousands of voters get to put in their, in their, their say. And, and that you all, we have a short window to do it in and, and we need to make a decision that benefits this board. And, and I know there's question about whether folks are gonna run again. I, I think that question was much more important for the party because this isn't, this is a opportunity for a political party to have an incumbent, but once they made their three nominations, that's, that's a whole lot less consideration for me. My biggest consideration is gonna be who, who I think is gonna sit down in, well, it was gonna be this chair, but Mary changed her mind, so now, now it's gonna be that chair, it looks like. And, and is gonna, gonna best, we have a lot of liaison positions that have been vacant for the last month that need to be filled. So I have to keep in mind who I think is gonna do best to fill those. And you three have made it hard for me. This is a really difficult decision. So thank, thank you for doing that. No, thank you for doing that. It's a hard decision, but I, I appreciate all three of you, so thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that. It's, uh, been kind of a stressful process. I'm sure it's more stressful for you all, but at least you're not having to spend money, so we're a little disappointed in that, but our campaign was pretty grueling. But I appreciate all of you for throwing your name in the hat. It takes a lot of courage to run for any office and take the beating that we do at, at times, but it's also a very rewarding experience that you, you get to enjoy. You get a little addicted to it once you get in it, and you try and always do the right thing, but sometimes that's, that's difficult. And today is one of those difficult things. Because I know pretty much all of you, and, you know, I consider our relationships different but valuable, and as Island pointed out, two of you are gonna walk away probably a little unhappy, and that, that weighs on the decision. But it's not about who you know, it's about who's right for Sweetwater County, and I intend to do just that regardless of any relationships, and that adds stress and difficulty to the job, but that's what we're up here to do. So I just want to thank you for your efforts. Thank your families for supporting you up to this point, and I guess we'll see where it shakes out. Rob, did you have anything, or you kind of already went over it?
Just one last thing, Mr. Chairman. I, I too would like to thank all three of you. As, as the chairman stated, and I believe Island stated also, two of you are going to be disappointed. I really hope that moving forward, that you stay involved. The passion that you've got is something that's needed here in Sweetwater County, and whether you serve as the appointee to our county commission, or whether you consent, continue serving on other boards or in other capacities, we, we need that. So I really hope that the other two of you move forward with that. And I'd like to see each of you, you know, running, bringing at the next election ideas for us so that we can do a better job, because that's what we're, what we're trying to do. So once again, thank you very much.
All right, the time has come, commissioners. So what we'll do here is open up the floor for nominations. Before I do that, I want to explain how that process will work. So nominations do not need to be seconded. You can have as many as obviously three of those. Once the nominations are closed, we will then accept a motion to appoint, but that must be done in the order in which the nominations are received, so it's chronological. If that first nomination is voted on and is successful, that will be the new county commissioner. If it is not, we'll move down the line on to the next nomination. So at this time, I would now accept nominations for your next Sweetwater County Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Thoman.
I would like to nominate Taylor Jones to, uh, fill our vacancy.
We do have a nomination for Taylor Jones. Are there other, any other nominations? I will nominate Casey Doak. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nomination?
Chairman, I would, I would nominate Jeffrey R. Mai.
We do, just by the wire. Have a nomination for Jeffrey R. Mai. That being said, all three candidates have been nominated. We will close the nominations. And as mentioned, these will go in chronological order. At this time, I will accept a motion to appoint your next Sweetwater County Commissioner. Which must be seconded.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to appoint Taylor Jones to be our next commissioner.
Got a motion to appoint Taylor Jones as the next commissioner. Do we have a second?
Second.
Original motion by Commissioner Thoman, second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're gonna roll call this vote, starting at my right with Commissioner Slaughter.
Aye.
Commissioner West, aye. Mr. Thoman?
Aye.
Commissioner Richards?
Aye.
That is a unanimous 4-0 vote. Please join us in congratulating Taylor Jones as your next Sweetwater County Commissioner.
I don't think it wasn't grueling for us, too. It, it's been a grinding, a grinding, slow process, but you're all three very worthy of it, and it was very difficult.
Congratulations, Taylor. Thank you to Casey and Jeff for your efforts, as we've all mentioned. We will wait for the Honorable Judge Lavery to come down and issue the oath of office, so bear with us. He should be here within the next 10 minutes. And we will officially get started, so we'll take a break until that point, and thank you all for being here today.
You want to sign both of these? Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor. Appreciate you coming down.
Have a great day.
Welcome aboard, Commissioner. This does conclude the end of our meeting, but we're gonna get you right to work here, and we look forward to working together with you and helping us out on bringing more success to Sweetwater County. So I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add before we adjourn?
Appreciate your confidence in me. I'll work hard and we'll see great things happening.
Commissioners, anything before we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
Welcome Commissioner Jones to, to our board, and, and I look forward to working with you.
Very good. We are gonna stay after a little bit after we adjourn here and take some photos, and then we're gonna go straight into the orientation process of showing the newbie how it's, how it's done, so. No further business to come before the board. This meeting is adjourned.